Hey, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Business Meeting for July 20th, 2023. If you would please stand for the invocation and Pledge Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. We give you thanks for your many, many blessings. We ask you to continue to bless our school system, the McIntosh County School System, our leaders, our staff members, and then we pray that our teachers will have a great and successful 23, 24 school year, and that our students will excel in their learning. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is Citizens Address the Board. We have one person signed in, Ms. Miners. If you would like to come up to the podium. Mr. Boom will start the timer.
Hi, my name's Julie Miners. I have a daring address, I'm outside the city. I'd sent some communication to the board when I had attended this year's graduation. My gosh, all those kids got graduated in an hour. I missed jeopardy, but I was home in an hour. I was very impressed. But I was concerned, I had attended football games about 15 years ago when my husband was alive, we were there for when the scouts were looking at Allen Bailey, very exciting. And back then, there were Christian prayers said over the microphone at a public school event, and I can only use nice words, so I'd always nudge- He wasn't a- My husband was a native Southerner, I am not. One lady said, "Just shows." But I'd nudge him in the ribs and say, "Well, to heck with the ACLU. I have feelings." I'm- no, I'm in the minority, but here I am. So it'd been a long time since I'd been at a large public school event, and I was surprised actually, and concerned that there was a benediction and an invocation and a benediction. And even with really strong hearing aids, I have a really serious hearing loss, so I'm not sure exactly what I heard, but the cadence of the missing syllables, I'm pretty sure we were praying in Jesus' name, amen. Even though it is, it was student-led, I didn't bring my online research, that a student-led prayer at a school-wide event, did the students who did not share those beliefs, do they what, get up and leave? Do they turn their hearing aids off? I don't know. I saw, I did read of an example where a student-led prayer at a public school graduation, that that's also a no-no. We could talk about the First Amendment, what's not, it's been discussed, it's been argued, it's been decided. My stronger feeling about it is saying Christian prayers in a public school will exclude some students or some people at the event. People who, it's probably the smaller number of people, but people who do not share those beliefs are at an event where that's happening. Besides, it's the legal thing to do, I mean, to leave the prayer out, rather than excluding people, they may feel offended, why not be inclusive, welcoming, friendly, including everyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of the regular business meeting agenda. Have our agenda items before us. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. We only have a couple items, so we'll just run through those instead of adding to a consent agenda, if that's fine. Okay, item number six will be our items of information. Dr. Williams and Ms. Sheets.
Go for it, Ms. Sheets. She's gonna share some curriculum and summer reading items with you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so, summer reading. As you know, we have a district initiative for summer reading, all three of our schools participate, and the main point for the summer reading assignments is to prevent that regression, so that we prevent that summer slide, if you will. We don't want our students to go back on the gains that they made during the school year. Had a lot of choice with our summer reading this year, especially at the elementary and middle school, so they did a good job of offering a lot of choice. And the books are available either online or at the schools, or we've actually done a really good job this year of working with our public library, Ms. Yoder, thanks to her at the Ida Hilton Library. She has come to some of our McIntosh Reads meetings, and so she's acutely aware of those summer reading assignments, and even ordered books that were on those reading lists, so that, to support our students. One thing that I'm really proud of that we've done this year is, I think we did a lot better job of communicating those assignments to the students and parents before the end of the school year, this year, and the transition teachers. I'm talking about your teachers, like your fifth grade teachers for the kids going into sixth grade, and the eighth grade teachers for your students going into ninth grade. They did a good job of previewing those assignments. In fact, your fifth grade teachers actually read the book that the students are gonna be required to read this summer for sixth grade, it's Hatchet by Gary Paulson, and they started reading a few chapters before school got out, so that the kids would be enticed and wanna be into the book and actually complete reading it, and they actually went over those assignments with them as well. And I know that Ms. Pascoe did the same thing, our eighth grade teacher, she did the same thing for our future, our rising ninth graders. So I was proud of them for that. The, all the assignments are posted on the school websites, they're available at the schools or the library, and I know at the elementary level, they're doing summer reading for, you know, a reward kind of thing, ice cream or what have you, ice cream party. And then at the middle school, it gets a little bit higher stakes, where they're trying to support our high school by making it actually worth a grade. And then at the high school, it gets even a little bit, a little bit higher stakes, and that is where it's a grade, but if they don't have it, then they can't exempt their final exam. So it's very important to get that done. I do have details if any of you have questions. All right, so, the next thing I wanna talk to you about, I'm excited about, this is good news for Todd Grant Elementary School. As all of you know, Todd Grant was on the Promise School list, and a Promise School is a school who is identified as being in the lowest 10%. Todd Grant is no longer on that list.
All right.
They made all the exit criteria, and they have made great gains in their state assessments, so they're off the list, and they were recognized at Gail last week. The whole, the school and Ms. Riles, her whole team, was recognized at our Georgia Educational Leadership Conference, and so that was a big deal. So congratulations to Todd Grant.
Absolutely.
More good news for Todd Grant? We can just have a Todd Grant, you know-
Todd Grant celebration.
Yeah, celebration. They were awarded a math grant. So the state of Georgia had opportunity grants that they sent out, an email for a request for proposals, and we could've written grants for anything from health, PE, science, social studies, math. Well, we chose math, because math is one of our school improvement initiatives. We've got literacy and we've got math. So they wrote a grant, Ms. Morris, Ms. Ricker, Ms. Condea, and Ms. Gordon, have to name them specifically because it was a difficult task, but they wrote a grant, you could, we could have applied for up to $4,000, and they wrote a grant for $3,976. So they were very close, and they were awarded $3,976. And they wrote the grant for math manipulatives, so that students could have hands-on activities to support our standards and support the Eureka Square curriculum that we use to teach our standards. And when I li- what I like about what they did with the grant is every grade level gets manipulatives, but they correlated the manipulatives to the standards. So, you know, how it could be used to support our standards. Let me give you one example, 'cause I really like it, 'cause I'm not used to some of these elementary things, but this says, in first grade, what they ordered was a number line clock, magnetic demonstration clock. And this helps students see that a clock is simply a circular number line, and it helps them change how they learn to tell time, so they can be bent into circles. I thought that was really neat. And, and also, they can draw the connection between a number line and time, so it's, it's really neat. Y'all have questions about the grant?
No, I'm excited that we're recipients.
Yes, yes, I am too, I am too. All right, well, last but not least, this is what I'm most excited to tell y'all now, I'm most excited to share, is Todd Grant was awarded Visible Learning Associate School Award, which is a major, major, big deal. And so, we have projected up here, and I won't go into detail, I know we're in the interest of time, but what is projected for you-
We have all night.
Well, in that case, let me just- So this is what is called, what we refer to as the Hattie Donut. So John Hattie is the founder of Visible Learning, he's the one that did all these thousands of meta-analyses to support all of this work. But I project this for you, so that you can see this graphic, so that you can see there's a lot that goes into it. And what is important to note is, there are a lot of things about instruction, but there are also a lot of things about students. So it's very student-centered work, and changing the mindsets of our students, and specific things that teachers can do for the students. So it's, it's really complex. When people ask what Visible Learning is, I always say, "How long do you have?", because it's, it's hard to explain, but it's good practice. So, we've got the Hattie Donut, and it's important to understand, though, that Visible Learning is what is considered the gold standard by the Georgia Department of Education for instruction. So I show this one slide, it's one of thousands of slides, of hundreds of PowerPoint presentations, but it's got the Godo insignia on there, and you can see that it's got the learning intention, and they're talking about teacher clarity, so it's all about Visible Learning. The Georgia Department of Education is filled with Visible Learning examples and suggestions for curriculum. When we were at Gail last week, every breakout session I attended for curriculum, they talked about Visible Learning and how to support Visible Learning. So it really is very, very important. So congratulations to Todd Grant, and to their principal Sandra Riles, who was very supportive in this work, and to the teachers, who we all know, if it's not for the teachers, it's not gonna get done.
That's true.
So I'm very proud of all of them. This is our certification. We get to display this logo on any of our paperwork, websites, emails, things like that, and what an Associate School is, we get to keep this for two years, and there are three different levels. There's the Associate Level, the Partner Level, and the Certified Level. And we are one of, well, let me just say this, only three schools in the state of Georgia have ever been awarded the Associate Level Award, and we are the fourth.
All right.
So we are among the key groups. And I just wanna talk just real quick about what it takes. So what, we had to submit an application, ours was 50 pages, I'm sure most are pretty long, because it is a very complex thing to do, but we had to show that we participated in specific professional learning. We had to show that we had evidence of school improvement on achievement for our state testing, which we did. We had to show that we have evidence of impact. So you remember that Hattie Donut that I showed for you? So in those four quadrants that were there, we had to show evidence of impact for those four quadrants. And what I mean by that, I'll just give you a quick example, on the top left is student dispositions. So we had to show that our students know what the difference is to be a good learner versus a good student, because a lot of times, students get confused that if they're, you know, to behave well is to be a good, good learner, that they're different. For example, when we interviewed students at the beginning, what is a good learner? Most of them responded with answers like, "A good learner be's, be's quiet, a good learner has a pencil." Okay, well, those are important things to learning, certainly, quite certainly, but those don't make a good learner. So what we did is, we came up with the acronym STRIPES, 'cause we're the Todd Grant Tigers, right? How do you, you gotta earn our stripes. So good learners, the acronym stands for, we set goals, let's think about it, gotta set goals. Good learners use teamwork, they're collaborative. Good learners are reflective, they've gotta go back to their goals and see how they're doing. Good learners are inquisitive, asking questions. Good learners, P is persevere, so, you know, just because you make a mistake or it's hard, you gotta keep going. Good learners are engaged, and, so that's a little different than quiet, because if you're engaged, you know, you're really thinking about what's going on and you're participating. And good learners, the last S is for seeks and gives feedback. So, at the beginning of the year, like I mentioned, we interviewed students and asked them what a good learner was, 14% were able to name attributes only of good learners. Then after we introduced STRIPES and used those things in the classroom, we interviewed them again a few months later, and 50% were able to do it. So we're growing with that, but we had to show all of that. We had to show the impact, and we had to do that for each area. So we, we've made some good progress with that. We had to participate in a school capability assessment, where somebody who is formally trained by John Hattie himself in Visible Learning, came to our school, talked to our leadership team, talked to our teachers, visited classrooms, did observations, did this whole huge report, and we had to meet certain criteria on that report. But what was really cool about that report to me is, you know, they asked teachers the same things that he was looking for in the report, and for teachers to self-assess, and teachers, the teacher's report matched his report. So we did a really good job of knowing where we were good and where we needed to go, and so I was proud of them for, for that. So anyway, we compile all of those things together, and we send it off to the global team, where John Hattie himself looks over it, and we are, we were awarded the Visible Learning Associate Award. And I just, we'll fly through these pictures, because I know we don't have time, but the, this is just some of the work, these are bulletin boards to support the STRIPES. You can see that our own faculty did professional learning with Visible Learning. Just kinda flip through there. We had small team meetings where we did a book study, and you can see, we've even got a middle school representative there, meeting with us, because we'll be carrying over some of this to our middle school. We've got students who are rating themselves on a level one, two, three, or four, for how well they are learning, what they're supposed to be learning, and why. So those are really cute. We've got students giving each other feedback. We've got teachers practicing with learning targets and success criteria, and again, students rating themselves, learning targets and success criteria. Here are students rating themselves and showing proof of why they are that level. These are for our dispositions, setting goals. These are just a few pictures. I love these little ones, you know, where they can show, those are their names and where they are, who can make an uppercase letter sound. That's for their, their steps to how they're gonna grow on their map testing and what their growth goal is. And those are goals for, you know, where they are with their sight words. And this is for perseverance, this is one of my favorite things, the learning pit. You will hear students say, "I'm in the pit, but I know I'm gonna make it out." And so, they really are changing their mindset of how they learn, and they're embracing mistakes as part of the learning process. What I'm most proud of, though, I think, in this process, is the teachers taking ownership, and the teachers are teaching other teachers. You can see that they're leading this professional learning. So what does this award mean? Well, look, our STRIPES, those are our STRIPES, and if you can look very closely, you can see the heads, these were projected on the national stage of the Annual Visible Learning Conference, and I was texted by a Corwin representative, and she said, "People are taking pictures of your dispositions." And here they are, getting the award, giving us the award, and you can, you better believe people had their phones out, taking pictures of the different things that we're doing at Todd Grant. So we are the example school. I got texts, I got emails. These were from Facebook, a Facebook post that I was tagged in, telling me, "Congratulations to your school," you know? So people, people are really recognizing the work that we're doing. I'm very proud of Todd Grant. We are gonna be recognized again at the Georgia Curriculum Conference this year, you know, our administrators go every year. John Hattie himself is gonna be there, just need y'all to know. And so Todd Grant will be awarded on that stage in front of all the Georgia administrators, and so we will, again, be the example school. But what I think is really important to understand is, yes, we're an example school, yes, we get a little braggy logo, right? So if you think about it, you think about a football team who wins the Super Bowl, they get a Super Bowl ring. That's braggy, that's great, we all get bragging rights. But it's more than that. What is a Super Bowl team good at? Football. What is a Visible Learning Associate School good at?
Education.
You got that right. We are good at education, and let me tell you, this is quite the Cinderella story, y'all. We went from a Promise School to a Visible Learning Associate School, and I couldn't be more proud of the teachers and administrators at Todd Grant Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, I updated y'all on several community meetings, but I forgot the one, and I didn't wanna leave them out, the local pastors that meet every Wednesday at Altman's. I went out and had breakfast with them, and it was a wonderful discussion, so I just wanted to share that with you. For the public, I want to share, the open house for all schools will be August the 3rd, Thursday, August 3rd, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then, if you have a rising freshman, they have a rising freshman event on August 3rd from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at MCA.
Okay, that's it for me. All right. All right, item number seven, Superintendent recommends approval of the June 23 financial reports. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Straggles, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Number eight, Superintendent recommends approval of the work session minutes from June the 5th, 2023. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. Number nine, Superintendent recommends approval of the regular business meeting minutes from June the 12th, 23. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. And number 10, Superintendent recommends approval of the MOU with coastal planes as submitted.
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Straggles, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. And executive session, can I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues? Okay, motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. We'll return. Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Straggles, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I would like to amend tonight's agenda to include discussion of Board Policy JCDB, the Student Dress Code.
Okay?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, so our next item, let's discuss dress code.
So I gave y'all a copy, I think I had mentioned in passing, that the principals had asked for us to just look at it. So I've done some research, looked at several different dress codes, so my propos- or our proposal, I've sent it out to principals for review, is that all of the, all of this in yellow on page one be eliminated and be replaced with the 10 items that are on the second page. So if you wanna take a minute, like, the 10 items would be what our guidelines are. We left all the things in there about the principal, still has the determination of what's appropriate for any item that's worn, you know? I was trying to think about the big things. The only things that, we took out the hairstyles. We took out sweatpants and joggers.
Yeah, 'cause they're wet, huh?
We took out, that visible body piercings is limited to ears only, but we did make it where it had to be a stud. So if you have a nose ring or a lip ring, it has to be a stud, not a loop, and that's a safety thing.
Yeah.
So, the length went from, I'm trying to find it real quick, two inches to fingertip or mid-thigh. That was, I think, the only big change they really asked for. Sleeveless, two-inch width. Everything else, I think, is just worded different and not, not so wordy. Does that make sense, like it's more concise and precise, so?
Not bold.
Yep, and we will actually, this would be a proposal, and so the next month, we would vote on it, but the problem with that is that school starts before that, and we have a handbook that goes out to students. And so we kinda need to get a feel for, you know?
We need to vote on this.
I support the changes.
And we can start school with the other one, and in August, change it. I, I'm open, that's up to y'all, so.
Doesn't that kinda get a little negative, or?
It would, it would. That's why I was trying to get it done, but kinda on a time front.
I think the main thing is, body parts are covered, that need to be covered, and, to me, that's-
Underwear, typically, cannot be visible.
Right. And the undergarments are under the garments. I think those are-
Yeah.
The main points. Our main concern is, you know, we don't need body parts hanging out, that shouldn't be.
No, this is school.
Or my main concern.
This is school, yeah. And we say that in the first paragraph, please make sure it's appropriate for schools.
Right.
Exactly, but that don't necessarily-
I've read through these 10 items twice now, and I'm good with all of these. And this would be universal for all three schools.
All three schools. The other change in number nine was the strap around the heel. Only for elementary, not for middle and high. That's been a major, like, it's not a contention point, but, you know, they wear their Crocs, and they don't put those straps on there, and, but I did find in, in another county's, and it said just for elementary, and I can see that, 'cause they would run down the hall and probably fall, so.
Or on the playground.
Mm-huh, mm-huh. So, but, but all three principals have reviewed it, and they were good with it, so I just wanted you to think about it, or consider it.
I'm fine with the changes.
I'm fine with the changes.
We can, I mean, if everybody's fine with it-
Go ahead.
We can make the motion to put it on the table.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, to make the change next month, and then they can just-
Go ahead and start school with it.
I think so.
Put it in the handbook?
Yes.
Richie, we fine doing that?
Absolutely.
You have to ask Richie.
We just wanna make sure that-
Over that wait period, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got that 30-day change of policy.
There's an exigent reason, you can do it within the wait period, yeah.
I think we do it now.
Okay.
I'm making a motion, we do it now.
We need to get the handbook out.
Yeah, correct.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we accept these policy changes regarding Board Policy JCDB, Student Dress Code, and the items 1 through 10 be included, inclusive for the whole school system.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. McIver, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so with-
Get it done.
With that, we move on to Board Comments. Start down here with Mr. Straggles.
Getting excited about the new year. Keep those kids reading, and we've got a lot of exciting things coming up, looking forward to it. That's all.
All right.
And once again, congratulations to Todd Grant. When they, when they came out, they showed out. They're doing a fine job over there, and- They're doing a fine job over there, and I think next time we meet, we'll be in school.
First day.
The first day, that's right.
First day of school.
Good luck there, everyone. That's all I have.
And I'd also like to send my good luck to everyone and our sincere appreciation on the accomplishments that the whole school system has made this year. I was very impressed with Mr. Willis's email this past week on the accolades of the high school, which included the Bright Ideas learning grants that we've received from Coastal Electric Membership. And there are lots of community outlets out there that support our school system, and we have been able, been, been fortunate and quite eligible for the benefits we've received from them, and I'm, I'm proud of everybody.
Cool. Also, I just want to say again, congratulations to Todd Grant and just overall our school system. I'm excited at where we are and where we're going, and I look forward to 23, 24 school year and see all the accomplishments that we will take place with our school system. And I know it's going to happen.
Yep, and I would like to say, welcome back, because our teachers will be back soon, and our students will be back on the 7th. I'd like to thank you, Shelley, for tonight, giving us that, although we like to hear Mr. Moss to talk, but I am just blown away at the fact that we are not talking about facilities, that we are talking about instruction.
Yes.
Because that's, you know, like I said, I don't always want to hear you talk. I appreciate you talking about facilities, but I'm not really interested in that, I'm interested in instruction. Thank you so much.
That's nice, Todd Grant and Shelley get a touchdown.
Thank you.
Touchdown.
And, and, do what? Exactly.
But, Mr. Moss, it took place in your facility.
Yeah. You have anything, Richie? Dr. Williams?
I'm good.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.